Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call this evening's meeting of Stratford City Council to order. As we all know, last Thursday, on September 8th, the Sovereign of our Nation, Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II passed away at the age of 96. She had been not only our monarch for Commonwealth in our country, but also someone who had visited Stratford. And as I've said to other people, she was somebody with grace and dignity and provided comfort in some of the worst times in our world's history for not just our generation, but many generations. And tonight, we'll begin this evening's meeting by observing a moment of silence in honor of Her Majesty at this time. Thank you. There is a book of condolences in the Destination Stratford office that we'd ask members of the public to stop by this week and sign their convenience. It will be forwarded to Buckingham Palace and the High Commissioner for Canada in London to deliver to the palace in the coming weeks. As well, there is plan for a community vigil to come together sometime later this week, and details will become available so members of the public can come out to Market Square in some silent reflection to hear some music and of course, to honor Her Majesty. So those details will be forthcoming and I'll look to share them with the community as they are finalized. At this point, I'll turn it over to clerk.
Three-year worship, item two is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any declarations? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and there's a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting dated August 8th and the special meetings dated August 10th and August 29th of Council of the Corporation of the City of Stratford be adopted as printed.
Moved by Counselor Ingram, second right Counselor Gaffney. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny? It's carried.
Item three is adoption of the addendum, and there's no addendum to be adopted. So moving on to item five, report of the Committee of the Hole-in-Camera Session. Item 5.1, just prior to today's regular council meeting, a Committee of the Hole-in-Camera Session was held to consider the following items. 4.1 Arbitration Update Under the Litigation or Potential Litigation Including Matters Before Administrative Tribunals Affecting Municipality or Local Board Exemption, Along With Advice That Is Subject to Sir Client Privilege And a Physician Plan, Procedure, Criteria, or Instruction To Be Applied To Any Negotiations Carried On or To Be Carried On By or On Behalf of Municipality Exemption. And item 4.2 was a Human Resources Matter, and that was considered under the Personal Matters About an Identifiable Individual Exemption, Along With the Labor Relations or Employee Negotiations and Exemption. And at the in-camera session, direction was given on both items.
Thank you.
Item six is Hearings of Deputations and Presentations. And item 6.1 is a presentation by the Stratford Tennis Club regarding winter tennis. And the first motion listed on your agenda is that Stephen Fisher, on behalf of the Stratford Tennis Club, be heard regarding winter tennis.
Moved by Counselor Ritzma, seconded by Counselor Burbak, Mr. Fisher be heard. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny? That's carried. The deputy clerk will bring Mr. Fisher into the meeting. Good evening, Mr. Fisher.
Good evening, Your Worship. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. I'll turn the meeting over to you. Thanks so much for making time to give us a presentation this evening.
You're very welcome. Welcome, everybody. It's good to be here with you folks. We're excited. Winter tennis is not that far away, and we're getting closer. And I was invited to share a little bit about what people can expect come this fall and this winter. Tennis Clubs of Canada did a survey of our membership back in the spring just to find out what kind of programs they like. And we all know the programs we like, you know. Monday night is ladies' night, Thursday night is men's night, Monday, Wednesday, Friday morning is morning group. And so, not surprisingly, Tennis Clubs of Canada has already decided to copy all of those programs as they are. We have a competitive league that runs every other Tuesday night in the summer. They're going to do something similar. They want continuity. They want, you know, people to feel comfortable. This is their club. It's just the way that they know it. They have hired our summer manager to be their winter manager. And our high school kids in the summer, they'll be talking to them about winter employment. It just makes sense for them. It makes sense for everybody. They've been particularly intrigued by our morning group this Monday, Wednesday, Friday. It's a senior citizens group. There's no rule that says you have to be a senior. They let me play with them once in a while. But we have a lot more seniors as a percentage of our membership than you generally find at a tennis club. Generally, the stats show that once you hit your late 50s at most clubs, in terms of a demographic, it really drops off after that. It's the fact that you're playing on hard courts. Basically, you're playing on cement. It's tough on the body. Whereas we are a clay court club. That was the work of the great Ray Cornish. And so, we have lots of people playing into their 60s and 70s, and even some into their 80s. We actually just, there was a program just this afternoon from 4 till 7 o'clock. The head pro for the winter club and some of their coaches were here and running some free programs for, well, for anybody who wanted to show up and see what winter tennis would be like. They really put an emphasis on youth. They want to encourage juniors to get involved, which is something we've always held dear with our summer club. There are going to be round robins and house leagues. And for kids who are a little more competitive, you know, the kids who would, you know, likely play, you know, travel hockey, travel basketball, there's going to be a rep tennis as well, and even a pre-rep for some of the younger kids who are a little more serious about the game and want to be very competitive. They do have one program we don't have. They call it Mixed Tennis Fitness. So they can, and I'm not completely, I have to see this one. This is, it's tennis lessons. It's sort of, you're in a group. You're having lessons with the instructor, but they add in an extra fitness component. You're already active, but it involves a lot of running around. And I'm not too sure what that looks like, but apparently it's great for the cardio and you get a really good workout in just one hour. One thing I would say for people wanting to learn the game at any level, based on what we saw today, these coaches and their pro are really high level. They really know their stuff. My son, our summer pros are high school and university students. My son was the tennis pro for three summers, did a good job. They certainly appreciated his efforts. These people are really, I mean, this is what they do for a living. And from what we saw today, people who come out for lessons in the fall are going to be, they're going to be impressed by what they see. Beyond this, is there, I could talk about, I could talk about the rates. I could talk about the clear dome a little bit. I'm just not sure of your time and what you would like to hear.
Mr. Fisher, you've given us a great indication so far of the program it'll go on. If you could maybe just give us a brief overview of the funding and the plan for when the dome will go up and come down and some of those aspects, that would be great, and then we'll open up to Member of Council for questions.
Okay, yeah. So Tennis Clubs of Canada, the plan is each year on October the 1st to put up the bubble. It's a dome. I still use the old word tennis bubble. They put it up at the beginning of October. They take it down at the end of April, and they take it away to their storage facility. So they run the club. They set their rates. Their rates that are, they're posted on their website are comparable to ours. The arrangement is, we have the five best months of the year for outdoor play. They have the seven months of the year when it's better to play indoors. So from May through the end of September, you want to be outside. And so, we are. October to April, probably better to be indoors. And so, there will be that indoor. That's why we will be able to play year-round in that indoor facility. In terms of the rates, they're fairly comparable with what we have in the summer, except for the seniors. The seniors get quite a discount. We've never had a seniors rate in our summer season. They pay the same as the adults. But this might be popular, and we may have to, we might have to follow suit in the summertime next year. In terms of court fees, if you're playing during the day, you know, mornings, afternoons, cost, you pay per court, not per person. You always have court fees in an indoor facility because you have those extra costs of the structure and maintaining it. During the day, mornings and afternoons, it costs $22 per hour, and that's with taxes included. So if you're playing singles with someone for an hour, you would each pay $11. If you're playing doubles, you would each pay $5.50. If you're a senior or a junior, it's a little bit less. It's $20 per hour. I know our seniors, none of them are playing singles. So they're playing doubles, and they're paying $5 per hour, and that's with taxes included. Evenings and weekends are a little bit more, $26 per hour. And again, you share that with whoever you're playing with. I should say, there is a guest rate. You know, for someone who's not sure they want to join, and it's like, I don't know if I would play that much, if it would be worth my while. You can just, if a friend of yours is a member, you can just pay $15 and you're in. And you still share in the guest fees, sorry, the court fees. But for $15 without a membership, you are welcome to play. And if we have visitors, as we do from the United States, we get them in the summertime. You get visitors in the wintertime. Again, it's $15 per person, and then you share the court fees.
Thanks. Is there any questions from Members of Council at this time? Counselor Clifford?
I've got a question because I'm in the heating business. It's a dome. Like, how are you planning on heating it? I'm quite curious how you're going to. It is cold in January here.
Yes, it's natural. Again, it's Tennis Clubs of Canada that will be doing this. It's gas-powered. Because we have a clear dome, things are a little bit different. It acts like, the dome is 93% transparent. And so, sunlight will penetrate the dome all day long. And so, the lighting costs and the heating costs are going to be significantly reduced. We're not going to, in a traditional tennis bubble, which is a solid structure, you have to have the lights on all the time. There's no light otherwise, and you're heating all the time. Because it's a clear dome, there will be no lights on at all during the after, the mornings and the afternoons, and it will heat up very similar to a greenhouse. The company that's produced it, it's a new technology. It's Broadwell Air Domes. If you go on their website, broadwellairdomes.com, they can explain it better than I can. They call their material Clear Strong Fabric because it allows that light. It's a strong structure. Even though it's see-through, it's very, very strong. They've tested it in winter conditions, minus 10 degrees outside in the bubble with no heat on, plus 10 degrees. It's remarkable, the cost savings, the energy savings. It's a real advance in environmental technology. And I suspect that this has applications far beyond just sports facilities.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson.
How long does it take to put the dome on and take it down?
It takes, it will, this year, they're thinking four days because they've never done it before, but it should take two days. So it's beginning next fall, two days, it's up, and we're going.
And are people still able to play while they're doing this?
No.
Or shut down?
No, no, no.
And then, and then, and then just, there's a lot of people watching this. So I just want to make it clear that this is at no cost to the city.
At no cost to the city. That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Steve, thank you so much for taking the time. Congratulations to the Stratford Tennis Club on this project with Tennis Canada. And we look forward to seeing the success of it. And thank you for coming forward and sharing some of the information.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Turn it back to clerk.
The three-year worship, the second item on this part of the agenda is the staff recommendation that the report titled Stratford Tennis Club Winter Tennis be received for information.
Counselor Vassalakos and Counselor Ingram moving in seconding. All those in favor? Oh, Counselor Vassalakos.
I just want to say thank you to staff and to the tennis club for coming and explaining this. I sort of, I think, may have started the, you know, what is happening at the tennis club because I've received something in, on, you know, on my front porch about it. And I thought it would be really nice for us to actually know what was happening up there so then we could talk to the public when they started to see things happening up there that we could explain what was going on and why. So thank you.
Right. Counselor Burbak?
Thank you. I also wanted to mention that we did have some questions from the Energy and Environment Committee about the bubble and the way it works. And we were, it was explained to us that there will be no tree removal or vegetation disturbed in the park. That there will be some tree trimming, but they are able to get the dome in without harming any vegetation. I actually had a question as well about the rental agreement mentioned. I'm just curious as to the city really not benefiting too much from the rental income. And I'm just wondering if there was any discussion about that among staff.
Traditionally, that agreement is a 12-month agreement. So the tennis club has exclusive rights to that facility over the 12 months. They've just decided to find a way to use it the other seven months of the year to their benefit.
Right. Yeah, it was just the disparity between what the tennis club pays to us and what they're going to receive from Tennis Canada is quite large.
I don't know, Ms. Thompson, or Mr. St. Louis, is there? I'll ask him if he has any further.
Yeah, just through the mayor. Yeah, the agreement with tennis, Stratford tennis has always been with the parks board. And you're correct, they're making, taking advantage of using another seven months of the season instead of, you know, a sit idle and have people active.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, Fanny? That's carried.
Item seven is Orders of the Day, and item 7.1 is a proclamation. And there's a motion on your agenda that reads as follows, that Stratford City Council hereby proclaims October 18th, 2022 as the 22nd Annual Childcare Worker and Early Childhood Educator Appreciation Day in the City of Stratford in recognition of the education, dedication, and commitment of childcare workers to children, their families, and quality of life in the community.
Moved by Counselor Ingram, seconded by Counselor Seven. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny? That's carried.
Item 7.2 is a resolution, and there is a staff recommendation that the report titled Restricted Acts in a Municipal Election Year for 2022 Follow-up be received for information.
Moved by Counselor Vassalakos and Counselor Burbak. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, Fanny? That's carried.
Item 7.3 is a resolution, and there is a staff recommendation that the Corporation of the City of Stratford enter into a contribution agreement between Her Majesty the Queen and Right of Canada as represented by the Minister of Infrastructure and Communities for the study of bus fleet electrification through the Zero Emissions Transit Fund, and that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the contribution agreement and any other related documents.
Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Ritzma. Discussion, Counselor Gaffney.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. This may just be a housekeeping matter, but would this not be a contribution agreement between His Majesty the King and Right of Canada at this point?
The document came in a few weeks ago, so it was Her Majesty. I'm sure whatever vernacular needs to be changed to reflect the legal requirement in the province, it will in due time.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, Fanny? That's carried.
Item 7.4 is a resolution, and there is a staff recommendation that council accept the tender from A&amp;G, The Road Cleaners Limited, for the purchase of a single-engine street sweeper at a total cost of $422,620, including HST, to improve the efficiency and service level of the Fleet Division for the City of Stratford while continuing to focus on the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions.
Mover, Counselor Ingram, seconded, Counselor Vassalakos. Discussion. All those in favor? That's carried.
Item 7.5 is a resolution, and there is a staff recommendation that the report titled Transit Bench Advertising Program 2022 be received, and that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the agreement with creative outdoor advertising for advertising on transit benches for a period of 10 years to 2032.
Counselor Henderson moving, seconded. Counselor Gaffney, discussion. Counselor Gaffney, Ingram, Henderson, Vassalakos, Seven.
Thank you, Your Worship. My question goes to, in reading the reports, why are we not looking at putting it in, putting this also in residential areas?
I'll let the manager of transit take that, Mr. Mosley.
Well, thank you. And through the mayor, usually these type of projects, we try to avoid staying out of residential areas just solely for the city's right of way. It changes depending on what subdivision you go to. In, for the same reason, we try to stay out of heritage for the same exact reason. So we try to keep it to main routes where, from the advertising perspective, it gets the most visibility for those that want to advertise. If we're on the main streets, it'll be more visual to those that want to advertise on them.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. I'm wondering if you can explain the rationale for 10 years? That seems like an abnormally long.
Thank you. Through the mayor.
My apologies. I'm not sure where that one came from. But if I understood the question, counselor, you were saying, why was it a 10-year? Why it's that long, if I understood the question?
Correct, yeah. Why is the agreement for 10 years? That seems abnormally long in terms of agreements that we generally enter into.
Right. So again, through the mayor, it's a 10-year because of the amount of benches that we have. So for creative outdoors to start seeing a return on their investment with the 20 or 30 benches that we might have, it's going to take them longer. In a bigger municipality where they have hundreds of benches, it's usually a way shorter contract because they're going to get a return on their investment in a much shorter time.
Thank you. And if I may ask a second question? The exit clause of 30 days, are there any parameters around that exit clause?
Through the mayor, no, there's not. After 30 days, if someone has frustrated the contract, it can be out at 30 days. If after the first year, we don't want to renew going for, sorry, after the 10 years, if we don't want to renew annually at that point, then we can get out in 30 days. And also, I'll add that if the city decides not to renew after 10 years, we have the opportunity to negotiate to keep the assets instead of the vendor removing them after the date.
Thank you.
Counselor Henderson, Vassalakos, Seven.
I have a few questions, and I sent them to staff. We entered the one about that we can keep them possibly after. I noticed some areas already have a bench, like, and I sent all the ones, like Downing North, Oakmires, and all the different ones. And I'm just wondering, are we, are they just using that shelter? And then, we're going to use the bench somewhere else, and they're going to put their bench in there? Is that the plan?
So through the mayor, so the benches are in addition to what's already there in the shelter. In the shelter, we have the barrier-free, it's about a two-seater in the shelter. These benches will go beside the shelter as an extra amenity. We pick shelters for the most part because the shelters, those bus stops are usually the busiest. So if you find it's too warm maybe in the shelter, you can sit on the bench outside. So these are, these are separate from the benches that are in the shelters. They're in addition.
And I noticed the one on CH Meyer and Marks that there's no curb cut, and there's no driveway or sidewalk closure. Are we planning to do anything else there to help people get into the, to that particular bus shelter?
And through the mayor, are you talking, sorry, the one at the mall? At the Mark's Work Warehouse or CH or River Dental, which is a little further?
No, the Mark's Warehouse. I mean, the River Dental has got the driveway not too far away, but the Mark's one's pretty far from the driveway. That's what I was just wondering.
Okay, so through the mayor, the bench that will go at the mall at the really large shelter will be right beside it with a concrete pad. So it'll still be accessible by walking in front of the shelter to get to the bench. There is a cutout at the traffic light that you can get up onto the sidewalk. And there's also a cutout, as soon as you come out of Marks and cross the driveway, there's a cutout in the mall sidewalk as well. So you have two access points to get to the shelter or to the bench.
Perfect. And my last question is, will they be buying the same type? And what I mean by that is, they won't have that armrest in the middle that is, doesn't accommodate all shapes and sizes? Do we stipulate that?
Through the, through the mayor, we'll be doing the same barrier-free benches like we do in the bus shelters. They'll be barrier-free and nothing in the middle. They'll be straight across, just like we do now.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Vassalakos.
I was just going to mention again, my, I'm really not convinced about having these only because I've yet to see any community where after a while, they don't look tired or they don't. And it isn't even just, you know, it isn't graffiti or damage or things like that. Like, if the, sometimes the ads stay too long, they look very faded, they look dated. So I'm, I'll reserve judgment, but I have yet to see anywhere where it's actually not become unsightly.
Thank you. Counselor Seven.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to note my continued opposition to this program. I think it adds unnecessary commercialization to different areas. I think not having any control, which I wouldn't expect to, but that over the content that will go on the benches is a concern. I think we currently have limited sort of billboards or similar advertising places in Stratford. And they're just, they're just not appealing visually. I think, I agree with Counselor Vassalakos' concerns. And I will note, I have seen one opportunity for advertisement in a plaza. I don't need to mention the exact one, but it's been, it seems to always be vacant, and they're looking for somebody to put their signage there. So I'm not, I guess I'm just not convinced, and my concerns about, yeah, that's it. That's it, I guess. I just don't support it. So thanks.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Clifford?
I was going to ask, it's not exactly the same, but I have a bus stop across from, like, my house here on the lawn, and it doesn't have a bench or anything. I was just going to ask the manager of transit, are they planning to have a bench at every stop, potentially or not, or other places that they aren't planning to have any, like, any benches at all?
Through the mayor, there'll be many additional locations down the road. Most of the concerns I have is the city's right of way. I, at all costs, try to keep these off of private property. If, unless you go into an agreement with someone. But for the most part, to put a bench or even a bus shelter in many of these locations, I would need to change the location of the bus stop so that it was on our right of way. It's something we're going to keep looking at as far as the future, as far as, you know, benches and shelters going, you know, over the next few years, just to see that. Some might just have to be moved because they're not, they might be a popular spot for passengers to use, but it might not be a great spot for a bench or a shelter.
Counselor Seven.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up to what Mr. Mosley was saying. I'm just wondering, would this be required to come back to council if there was a potential expansion into residential neighborhoods? Or could, yeah, I guess that's my first question.
Okay, through the mayor, I would, it would, if I got to that point where I thought it would be beneficial in a residential area, I would definitely come back to council. At this point in time, I'm striving not to put. At this point in time, I'm, I'm striving not to put this type of furniture in residential areas.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Henderson.
Yes, I remember asking that question when you put the one on Maple Street. But you had said that you would have got permission from the homeowner and it was part of the last. Ten or twelve we did recently. Like, my understanding is we have over three hundred bus stops. And in the last, correct me if I'm wrong, three or four years, we've put ten to twelve new ones out. Is that approximately right? So there's lots to still be done, but then there'll be some areas that possibly won't ever get one. Is that correct?
Yeah, so through the mayor, Counselor Henderson, you're correct. We have three hundred bus stops in the city. And at present count, we have sixty-one bus shelters.
Anything further? If not, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? To oppose to the motion carries.
Item eight is business, which previous notice has been given and there's none scheduled. So moving to item nine, reports of the standing committees. Item nine point one is the report of the Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee. And there are two items listed for consideration being item nine point one point one, the Basement Isolation Subsidy Program Update. And item nine point one point two Bicycle Lanes on Fraser Drive and Foreman Avenue.
All right, moved by Counsel Vassalakos and seconded by Counsel Burbak, discussion. Counsel Gaffney.
Thank your worship through you. On item nine point two point one. I want to ask the chief if. If they had a look at their turning radiuses. And their fire trucks that they're able. To that corner.
If, if we could finish, we're on the first one, which is nine one one, which basement isolation and the second one being nine one two.
All fridges. Yes, sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, I got ahead of myself.
No problem, but I bet you're going to have a good question and the chief's working on the answer now. Counsel Henderson.
I was just curious, I don't know, I've never sent this out, I should have, I apologize, but. How many do we do approximately a year? And? Is this like a list similar to when people's? Pipes freeze, just so we have that program when we're doing the road that they can hook up? Is that for that type of, of program? Or I also want to check, I, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to these, but I want to ask the questions. I'm sure there's people out there that want to know. So if I'm just doing something in my home and I decide to upgrade it, I can apply for it also?
It's true.
It's like, I guess I'm wondering how many more homes need to be done or is, is it just? An ongoing thing as a house ages?
Mr. Crankcloth, I could.
Yeah, so the chair, I guess I'll answer the first question first, sorry, to the, the mayor. So. Typically, these replacements happen when there's an issue at the house, so more often than not, it's more reactive response and then going through the process, the resident realizes that there's a chance for. The subsidy apply their, their, their unit. In terms of how many we do in a given year. Only a small handful, as noted in the other report to date when the report was written. There only have been eighty-one hundred dollars of subsidy claimed, so I probably go to four projects. Hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
All right, anything? All those in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry it.
Item nine point two is the report of the Planning and Heritage Committee, and there is one item listed, which is item nine point two point one, variance for ground sign to be erected on one sixty-six to one ninety-four Ontario Street.
All right, I believe moved by Counsel Ritzman, seconded by Counselor Burbak and Chief Parity. You have a? Answer for a turning radius question?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Through your worship. When it comes to anything to do with the turning radiuses or zero setbacks, how close they get to the curb cuts or the, the street itself. Infrastructure Development Services always takes into account our, our vehicles, whether it's a turning radius or anything for operations. In this case, for zero setback, we typically don't go right up to a curb. We always give ourselves room for operating. So we always give ourselves a buffer from the side of the trucks right up to the curb for the zero setback to begin with. Unless, of course, it was closer to a hydrant. But once again, Infrastructure Development Services, if they thought there was an issue, they would have called us out and we would have taken a truck up there and just attested it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Anything further? Not all in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry it. Thank you.
Item nine point three is the report of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee, and there's one item listed being item nine point three point one, proposed twenty twenty-three budget process and tentative schedule.
Moved by Counsel Gaffney, seconded by Counsel Clifford. Discussion. All those in favor? Oh, Counsel Seven, sorry.
I just wanted to note that I'm opposing this motion only because of the no target being set for the increase. I'm, I'm fine with the rest of it, but just for that one piece, so thank you.
Great. Anything further? Not all those in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry it.
Item nine point four is the report of the Social Services Committee, and there are two items listed. Item nine point four point one is the Annual Community Income Tax Clinic for Completion of Two Thousand and Twenty-One Returns. And item nine point four point two is the Two Hundred Britannia Street Affordable Housing Project Update.
Counsel Henderson moving, seconded by Counsel Burbak, discussion, Counsel Vassalakos and Counsel Clifford. Do you have a question, Counsel Vassalakos? No, Counsel Clifford, do you have one?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, on the report on Britannia Street, it goes back to July twelfth, I believe, if I read correctly. I was just going to ask the director of, also director. If there's any update on that, has it been any overspending or is there any problems with? Project as far as cost?
Thank you through the chair. At this time, it still remains within the current budget that we had put forward. We will bring to council if, if we find that not to be the case.
All right. Seeing no other hands? All those in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry it.
Item ten is notice intent, and there's none scheduled. So moving to item eleven, reading up the bylaws, there are three bylaws listed. First being item eleven point one, award tender for the purchase of a single-engine street sweeper. Item eleven point two is an agreement for funding under the Permanent Public Transit Program Zero Emission Transit Fund. And item eleven point three is an agreement with Creative Outdoor Advertising for advertising on transit benches, and these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present.
Moved by Counsel Beatty and seconded by Counsel Ritzman, that they be taken collectively. Counselor Seven?
Could we take eleven point three separately, please?
All right, so move that to eleven, one and two be taken collectively. All those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. So we'll go to first and second reading by law eleven, one and eleven, two. Moved by Counsel Burbak and Counsel Vassalakos. For first and second reading, all those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Third and final reading, moved by Counsel Clifford and Counsel Gaffney for bylaws eleven, one and two. All those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried. Bylaw eleven, three to be moved for first and second reading. Counsel Beatty and Counsel Ingram, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? To oppose, it's carried. Third and final reading, bylaw eleven point three, Counsel Henderson and Counsel Gaffney moving in seconding. All those in favor? Opposed, any? To oppose, that's carried. Thank you.
Item twelve is the consent agenda. Are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
Counsel Burbak, Counsel Henderson in that order.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to bring forward CA two thousand and twenty-two dash zero nine seven, which is a resolution from the town of South Bruce Peninsula. Regarding physician shortages in Ontario. And I think we can all, we all know that that's a problem. So this is a, a resolution that's going to Premier Doug Ford and his government. To ask them to, to work on physician recruitment and retention, especially in rural areas, so.
So Counsel Burbak will move that, seconded, Counsel Vassalakos. Counsel Clifford, do you like to speak to it? Thank you.
I was just going to ask, like, we've had people speaking about this. I, I'm just, like, I have a doctor now and I'm in Stratford, which I'm, I'm extremely thankful for that. But he is the problem in Stratford as bad as it was before. I, I'm like, I'm curious about that, like your worship.
My last meeting with the hospital president said that we are still probably one physician behind where we'd like to be, which is about sixteen hundred patients. All right, all those in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry it. Any, Counsel Henderson, I had you next.
I just wanted to speak to two thousand and twenty-two oh nine eight, and it was just to say that. Citizens of Stratford are certainly looking forward to the Stratford Fall Fair from. September twenty-second to the twenty-fifth, so. Everybody can get out and enjoy the fair.
Yes, for sure. All right, thank you. We'll go on then to new business. Is there any new business? If not, a motion to reconvene in Planning Committee. Counsel Ingram and Counsel Vassalakos, all those in favor? And that is carried. Now turn the meeting over to Counsel Ritzman as the chair for planning.
Thank you, and I'll just preface, I'm having a little bit of internet stability challenges, so I'm, I'm sure, sure I'll get through, but. So I'll call the meeting to order and there are regrets provided by Counsel Bunting. Item number two, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interests? Seeing none. Delegations are none scheduled. Moving on to item number four, reported municipal law enforcement officer. Item four point one, a Stratford Perth Museum Remembered State Sign by Law variants. And I will invite our chief building official, Mr. DeWeard, to make a presentation.
Thank you, and, and through the chair, give you a quick overview of this. Request from the Stratford Perth Museum with regards to the Remembered State Program. So the objective tonight is to consider assigned variants requests for two fascia signs. Which, which have already been approved prior, but expire on December first, two thousand and twenty-two. So the. The lead, or the Legion in, in concert with the Stratford Perth Museum is asking for an extension on that for another ten years. For the, the banners on City Hall. And then secondly, we're looking to consider expanding the, the light standard banner program. For, for the years going forward. From the current twenty-four banners that are approved upwards of a hundred at, at the scale of about ten new banners per year. So it's been a good. Program. They're looking to expand this program as we go forward in the next, in the next ten years. Now that particular. Sign variants for the, the banners is actually to expire in two thousand and twenty-seven, but they're looking to be proactive and, and get both of these on track for another ten years up until two thousand and thirty-two. So I'm, I'm able to answer any questions if council has any at this time.
Thank you, Mr. DeWeard. Any questions? Counsel Henderson?
I was just wondering if there come any variants in that, like, say some citizens are watching tonight and they decide they want to donate towards the banners. Could they actually put more than ten a year up?
So through the, through the chair, thank you, and good question. That, that would actually be a better question probably to be asked directly of the, the Stratford Perth Museum. I, I think that the ten new banners target was just simply to scale it up slowly over time, but if citizens felt compelled to do that, I think that would be a wonderful, wonderful thing.
But there wouldn't be any restriction at our end. They could actually put more up if they want.
Through the chair, that's, that's correct. There wouldn't be any limit. We would just limit it at the hundred.
Perfect.
Anything further? Counsel Gaffney.
Mr. Chair.
You're muted. Counsel Gaffney, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for pointing that out to me. Well, I see in, in the final result, they're saying it should go through the Community Grants Committee, which I think is right. So I'm in full support of this.
Is that a motion?
I, I, and I will make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. And a secondary, thank you, Counsel Ingram. Further discussion? I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And item number five, a mover for adjournment, please. Counsel Seven and Counsel Beatty, thank you all in favor. And that's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Counsel Ritzman. Counsel reconvene, I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Up through you, Mayor Maxon. I see Counsel Henderson has her hand up.
Counsel Henderson.
I, I just wanted to clarify my remarks about the fair. It's actually from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-seventh, the twenty-second and twenty-third, they're just doing setup.
Thank you.
Through your worship, item fifteen point one is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any declarations made at standing committee to be restated at the reconvene portion?
Seeing them.
Item fifteen point two is reading of the bylaws, and there is one final bylaw to be considered, that being the confirmatory bylaw, and it requires first and second reading and third and final reading.
First and second reading, Counsel Ingram and Counsel Burbak moving in seconding. All those in favor? Opposed, any? It's carried. Third and final reading, Counsel Vassalakos and Counsel Gaffney, moving third and final reading of the confirmatory bylaw. All those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. And a motion to adjourn this evening's proceedings.
May I add one thing through you, the mayor?
Did you have something?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I, I just caught the tail end of Counsel Henderson. As chair of the fair, the fair opens on Thursday, the twenty-second and runs through till the Sunday, the twenty-fifth, and all those are fair days.
Thank you.
Sorry, I read the poster and it was twenty-four to twenty-seven that I saw. Perfect, that's great. More days is wonderful.
Thank you.
All right, so we had a mover and a seconder for adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.